Okay, today is January 4. This is a meeting of the Action Ambulance Oversight Committee. We're calling the meeting to order and getting ready to start. Passing a sign sheet. Everybody can tell you to place a sign. First thing on our agenda is committee purpose.
Could I just request that everybody do a self introduction? Because not everybody here may know each other.
We have two coming in on Zoom as well.
Okay. Heather Turkop.
Donna Hatch.
Michael Waranka from Action Ambulance.
Jim Schofero, Action Ambulance.
Jim Smith.
Alan.
Scott Trombley.
Lawrence Sterling Elliott.
Brian Kibby, Wolverhampton.
Robin Moore.
Bob Markle.
And on Zoom, we have Pat Pharoah, I assume, and Robert Swern from Action.
Action CFO, yes.
Okay. Okay, you ready? All right, to start us off, given that we're two and a half years into our contract, and this is really one of our first formal meetings, I thought that we will need a purpose statement, which was what we should have had two and a half years ago. So, in your backup documentation and for discussions, what I wrote. And this is just how I see this committee. If we want to make any changes, we can make that and we're done. The purpose of the ambulance oversight committee is to oversee and manage the June 2020 executed contract for ambulance services between town and Action Ambulance. This committee will monitor performance of delivery services to ensure compliance and quality. For the rest of residents' concerns and questions, we'll provide recommendations to the board of selectmen. The committee will act with integrity and best interest for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. It's in the backup documentation. I want to give them this package.
It's in, yeah, it's here. It's in the, it's in the packet.
Oh, here it is.
After that.
It's towards the, towards the end of the packet.
Does everybody have a copy of the package? Any comments? Questions? Do you agree that this works for our purpose?
You, you have, it's specifically to the contract that was, manage the contract of June 2020. Is there anything there about managing moving forward?
No, because we're not there. We're managing the contract execution. We had an extension. But right now, that's what our purpose is.
Okay, is this, this is your, your wording? Was it, okay, because when the selectmen formed the committee, was there a set of goals and objectives that they gave?
Well, I don't recall that, but per the contract, this is what we're charged to do. If you'd like to make changes, you're certainly welcome to propose changes. This is just a place to start as how I saw the purpose of our meeting.
Okay. I, I would like to think about that. I don't want to comment on it tonight. I want to go back and review prior minutes from the selectmen and see what they envisioned the committee's purpose to be. I, I realize within the context of the interaction with Action Ambulance and overseeing the, the quality of service, I, I agree with what you've got here, but I, I think there may be a wider scope.
Okay. We'll table this to the next meeting. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Day number 16. We're meeting by Jim Smith. I have a few comments. First of all, I think we need to include the attendees.
Okay.
In the minutes. But regarding contract performance, I think we need to round out the notes that you have here to include the national paramedic EMT shortage. And that Action was working to resolve that. And I think it's also important to note that in ALS calls, that Action didn't stop, that mutual aid handled those calls, and that at no time was there ever a risk. That's what was the final call. And response time, the all call.
Okay, so the national paramedic shortage issue, the ALS handled the, was handled by mutual aid. And what was that last one, Donna?
Response times, generally around five minutes. And that's been consistent.
Can I add? I think the wording is a little bit, sorry, the wording is a little bit strong. That Action Ambulance was still failing. I think we could rework that because it's kind of derogatory. And again, there's a national shortage. When the contract was written, was prior to COVID. No one could ever anticipate what kind of problems there were going to be. And it is a national problem. So I think that wording was a little bit strong.
I, I don't know what's wrong with the word. Failing means that they didn't meet their obligations. I, I, I don't know what word you want me to use.
Maybe falling short occasionally. And it, it had only happened a few times and was still.
I have failing on occasion.
Was, was still, just infers that it's been a repeating, you know, was still failing. So that just indicates.
Was it the time of the meeting?
It just, in my opinion, it's a little bit strong. And I don't want to, if somebody on the outside, you know, any of the public read this, I don't want them to read more into it than the few times that it did happen and the reasons behind why it happened and why it happens in every department across the country and in healthcare in general. So there are reasons behind it. I understand about the contractual obligation, which the contract was written before COVID and all of what goes along with it. So I think it's a national issue and it just seems to be a little bit strong. And that's my opinion.
So, just my opinion is, as a recording secretary, I record the facts, and these are facts. If you prefer them to be couched, couched in some sort of different wording, I would say, what do you want instead of failing? What word would you prefer?
How about something like, I feel a confluence of incidents, notably loss of the royal contract, and the reserving staffing issues, the national P E M T shortage. You know, Action, we use the word fail if you want, or Action has unmet its contractual obligation. Right.
To, to the ALS requirement for X period.
People are mixing apples and oranges. We have a fact. We have, we have a fact.
I'm not arguing the fact, but that is the fact, yes. We had an interruption in service. They did not meet the obligation. That is a given. What we're looking to do in this paragraph, I think, is to capture the whole picture. And this just captures it from a perspective.
Right, I agree. And then to include that at no time where any, any residents or patients were compromised.
I, I agree with you on that because that could be inferred.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, we're negligent.
Right.
Don't complete the picture. Now, there's this confluence of events, like the national shortage staffing. We're not so special. We're, I got staffing issues also. But it's precipitated by, you know, taking, you know. And departure of staffed ambulance to.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, it's all part of it. Yeah, I would agree.
So it's not like they were failing in their contractual, you know, obligation by any other means of negligence or anything? I think the, the.
Negligence is the key thing. I mean, they, they did not meet their contractual obligations, but it was due to circumstances beyond their control.
Right, right, exactly. And that's.
That, I think, rounds out this, the minutes to this meeting.
I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just trying to think of how to put that into the minutes to be accurate. I can't do that on the fly right now.
Oh, that's fine. Nobody's expecting.
My, my suggestion is that we hold off on approval of this. I will submit another draft that I will give the, the information behind the, the failures. But I, I don't want to soft pedal the fact that there is a failure to meet obligations regardless of circumstances.
Nobody's asking. I'm just asking you to, you know, add reasons, you know, so if somebody two years from now goes to look at this document.
Okay.
And just one typo. One third paragraph down. About a half.
Third paragraph down in the.
Third paragraph down under the left hand wall.
Okay.
And that is.
There's a sentence there.
Okay.
And the meeting was called to order at 6:15.
Okay. Yeah, that was at.
Yes.
And then the other thing that I would like to add is we, we're missing the rebate check for 14.
Cash?
I believe that had been announced at the prior selectmen's meeting, and that's why I didn't make note of it here.
No, it was also part of that meeting, though.
Okay.
And we had a discussion.
It was announced at the prior selectmen's meeting and some discussion about whether it could be used in the current fiscal year. And the decision was that we have to, with this funding, we have to observe the standard rule. It goes into the general fund and closes out to free cash July 1st. Or when free cash starts. Next fiscal year.
Yeah, I just remember the discussion about the money going to free cash. I think we had to vote on it.
Okay.
So again, you know, just trying to capture some.
Do you have the attendees, Jim? Because I made my list and that's in here.
No, I, I only noted the members present, the members of the committee present. I didn't, I didn't note anybody else.
We have, I think, Craig, Don, and Scott. And I think you were there with everybody else in the fire.
I don't believe.
Who was from that?
I believe he was there.
I was there with selectmen too.
Yeah, well, I said Craig and Don.
Okay. Don?
I was there.
I was there.
No.
Donnie was there.
Yeah, is there any? What's that?
Anthony Jackson.
Got anybody else? Yep. Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else to add? So the only other thing in these minutes is the question was asked, but left unanswered until the next meeting, as to what kind of compensation the town should receive for the lack of full ALS service. I think that's going to be coming up later. So I don't really have anything to say in terms of these minutes.
Okay.
Okay. So we can approve the minutes. We'll just move to the next meeting.
To review them then.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
Okay, moving on. Staffing issue, ALS versus BLS. Mike, can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, I'll pass it off to Jimmy, our operations person, who's handling the schedule on a daily basis for an update.
So, full-time staffing is, as I mentioned, same ALS, VLS. Short couple days, full-time staffing. We pick up a lot of part-time paramedics that are picking up those shifts on a regular basis now. Just not a scheduled, maybe we pick it up if we can. But we have three that are rotating in and out. I think it's the coverage better than one quarter last time we did that.
So are you saying that you're filling staffing with part-time?
Yes.
So are we getting ALS service 24/7?
Yes, on a better basis. There are certain days, it happens sometimes with ALS, but it's, it's at a higher rate now than it was before.
Do you have any sense of how close you are to 24/7?
Seven days a week.
Yeah.
Not really. I have one more paramedic coming in now. It was only, at least leave one day a week that it'd be open.
This is the last meeting. You're in the process of hiring two permanent employees?
Yes, and I lost one.
You lost one?
I lost one. It seems every time we hired one, one goes away, so. Unfortunately, that's just major beast right now.
So last week, I thought I heard that you were staffing all day Saturday.
Which was being staffed by overtime.
Yeah, part-time employees and overtime, yeah.
So now I'm hearing that we're getting some BLS shifts or some periods of time on a shift that are BLS.
There are, yes, there have been periods of time where part-time medic couldn't make it to see another job. We staff BLS for a few hours, let them get in here and work the shift.
Okay.
Or, you know, with a sudden sick call. Somebody there in time, the last person to answer, you backfill it.
So.
This begs the question, you're, you're, you're asking these questions, but why don't we have statistics on this? It's, I just. What?
And maybe Brian, you can help tell us here.
Under the impression that, like, we would see, it looked like a shift was BLS. And then Tony was explaining that it's not the shift. It's just, like you said, that gap that's 30 minutes or two hours or whatever, that's BLS. Wilbraham is the prize of the situation. And then we go to ALS as soon as that individual shows up. So Brian, do you have any, I mean, how, how can we get to figuring out?
Give you a snapshot for December, for how that looks. There were 12, there were 12 service level changes in December. Broken down by days, zero occurred on Mondays, two occurred on Tuesdays, one occurred on Wednesdays, three occurred on Thursdays, zero on Fridays, five on Saturdays, one on a Sunday. If you're going to break those down further into four separate categories in terms of less than or equal to four hours, less than or equal to 12 hours, or less than or equal to 24 hours for BLS coverage, or greater than 24 hours. It reads like this. Three out of the 12 were less than or equal to four hours. Four out of the 12 were less than or equal to 12 hours. Three out of the 12 were less than or equal to 24 hours. Two out of the 12 were greater than 24 hours, but less than two days. Like 1.3 or 1.5 days. And that's, that's, there's still coverage. It's just BLS is the primary truck for those incidences in the month of December.
So for someone needing ALS level service, then that would default to a mutual aid?
It would default to a mutual aid under the agreed-upon jurisdictional map, which town is called if they have a resource available.
Okay, which we'll get to the whole map thing a little bit later when we update that, right?
What do you mean?
Last week, in this call that Bob asked me to join, I think it was East Long Meadow that was asking for the map to be shared.
Yeah.
And maybe I'm mixing up the languages, but when we get to communications, we can talk about that.
Sure.
What would be the logistics for those statistics to be available to the committee members? And not, not like hourly, but.
That's, that's just a snapshot. It can be more specific or less specific. We just need to know what, in advance, Tony or I would need to know, more so Tony, he'll need to know what you're looking for.
Could you, by any chance, give us October, November, and December so we can see improvement?
With the same.
Yeah.
The same categories up?
Yeah.
Can you add one more parameter?
What's that?
When we had to actually call for mutual aid.
When we had to call for mutual aid for an ALS call under that time slot when there was only a BLS.
We got, okay, so.
You know, when we actually had a call and we had to, we had to rely on mutual aid.
So on the month of December, now this is partially off of my head from doing research earlier today. You had roughly 56 calls for medical services within the jurisdictional boundaries of Hampton for the month of December. 12 of those calls out of the 56, Action was available but at a BLS level. Five calls, Action wasn't available and it required in mutual aid response as a primary. I'll have to double-check that. That's just off the, off the top of my head, but I believe that's how it was.
So when you say not available, is that because they're on.
Actually, it doesn't mean that they weren't available. Yeah, the resource could have been committed to another call. And some of those calls also, Action took the call that would have. So we were in the process of toning out a medical mutual aid to another community. But then Action, the other dispatcher checked with Action and the bus had already cleared the hospital. They were 10 minutes outbound from the hospital, so they were able to take it as primary.
Okay.
They were just responding from Springfield versus responding from Commercial Drive. Is that?
It's me.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong on anything.
No, you've got good data, all in all. I, I think one of the important things is, is that we're, we've started to open up our GPS system, start sharing the GPS data with the dispatch center. We opened that up today with our login information to police, fire, and also to the dispatch center. So they'll actually be able to see the actual physical location of that truck to determine where it's coming from on these calls, which is going to be nice. So they'll know if the truck is clearing the hospital or where it is exactly in relationship to clearing the hospital to be back in town as well.
And that's shared with the Wolverham call center or all?
I shared it with Tony today. Tony is away on vacation, so I can't speak that it's been disseminated to the staff as of yet. The long term.
No, I mean, the, the, the physical sharing of it. The real-time sharing is going to be to the Wolverham dispatch center.
To the dispatch center and also police and fire in town.
In Hampton and Wolverham.
Correct, yes. So that will help with decision-making about truck location as it's clearing the hospital to help them make a decision whether they tone a separate entity out or just send the call to us all together.
I'm sorry, I just want to, your, your mic, right?
Yes, okay.
Your last name?
Waranka.
And it, the further what Mike says, from a personal perspective, from a dispatch perspective, a lot of times it's an issue getting ahold of Action not because of their fault when they're in Monson or Palmer, because we can't hear the truck clear. Sometimes we hear them on their frequency and we can follow up with them there, but we can't hear the truck clear when we would have otherwise maybe toned Action directly and bypassed the mutual aid response. So I know from a personal perspective, I would definitely check that. If a medical came in and I knew we had a truck responding, or we sent the Action truck mutually into Monson, or I knew they were clearing the lane. I would probably take a second and check that before I, I toned it out. But Tony would have to, Tony would have to look at that and then develop a policy to direct it forward as well.
Something we can, we can talk in detail on, get to communications.
Sure.
And the radio and the regional stuff that you guys met on last week and then again today.
Senator Rossi, when you say a vehicle has cleared the hospital, they're on route back, how close do you feel is acceptable to go ahead and continue that unit versus a mutual aid that may or may not be possible?
We let the dispatch center make that ultimate determination at the end.
So it goes back to me right now?
So it goes back to me. In terms of a policy or procedure, we don't have a specific directive that I'm aware of that determines like mileage from the, from, from the point that, from the destination of the ambulance.
I would say more like Brooklyn minutes.
So I, I go by town. If it's one town over, I'll use that as a primary. If it's not, I'll probably say yeah. I make the decision personally, as an individual, not as an entity. I would make the decision personally to follow the mutual aid protocol and see what I can grab. Or if I've been listening to the radio, I might know that a Monson ambulance just, just cleared on the town line, or a Monson ambulance might have come into town for a mutual aid medical and cleared with patient refusal. I might jump the protocol for that, even though there's no policy on that, just to grab the Monson ambulance if I can. But it's, it's, I don't know how to describe it. It's a very fluid situation and there's so many moving parts because ambulances in Massachusetts are, are regional. If a, if an entity, private or municipal, has an ambulance available, it has to go. So trying to find that and work within our policies and get it assigned to the call is, it's just very fluid and kind of call by call.
I just want to make sure that since we had a contract with Action, if they say we're clear at the hospital, then we're not just going, okay, you got the call even though they do close your minutes.
No, and Action is, Action is usually clearing from Bay State Way.
Yeah.
Which is a relatively, once, once Route 20, once to Wolverham, it's a relatively short time. Or Bay State, Bay State Hospital. But when they, we put them in service when they say clear and service.
Right.
And if we don't hear them say clear and service, then we follow up with them. And if we can't get ahold of them, we follow up with Action dispatch. Although we've been able to get ahold of them for the clear and service, or at least I have on a personal basis, more often than not in the recent, in the recent future, recent past rather.
You know, this is a subjective question, not no definitive answer, but is there a cascading effect right now? We use, we're calling other towns for mutual aid because on occasion we do not have the ALS available to us. So is that causing problems or delays in those towns?
I can't, the only town I could speak to is Wolverham. Out of the, of the 56 total calls that you had, or the 12 mutual aid, the 12 calls requiring mutual aid, Wolverham responded for three of them. So I can't speak for the fire department, but it's, it's a relatively small number from a dispatcher's perspective. It's three calls.
Okay. What we can say is there's a cascade effect that goes both ways. Right, so we're in East Long Meadow earlier this evening. And when we're sending trucks to Monson, to Wolverham to back them up, it cascades the other way. So the truck here, we've determined, which is interesting over the past couple of weeks in terms of all the meetings that we've had, the truck is based in Hampton, but it's becoming a regional support truck. Okay, so that truck is servicing multiple communities because of staffing deficiencies in other communities as well. So we're now sharing across the board. Last week with the East Long Meadow chief in our conversations here, he was admitting that he has a staffing problem within his own department as well. So when those trucks go down because of staffing problems, it impacts the Hampton truck as well because we're being sent as the coverage ALS truck to either Wolverham or in East Long Meadow along with their BLS unit too. And also intercepting some time at Monson too. So it's really now turning into a regional unit instead of just Hampton truck because of what's the regional impact that it's having.
Are dispatchers able to see or monitor the location of ambulance?
So they will with our truck. And then we have to work with the backup trucks coming into the system as well. Our conversation with East Long Meadow today is they think they have the technology to do it, but they're not sure. They, they're looking at that. So we think long-term, and we'll probably get into later discussion on this, is some type of dashboard that can be shared that we're working on developing in another region. That's a regional problem, which is on the North Shore, Dipswich, Raleigh, Grover, Georgetown, and all these other communities. We have a 20-something community mutual aid meeting that happens every month to share resources amongst all those towns, to create a dashboard to show availability. So they're not calling, East Long Meadow, I mean, I think you said in the meeting earlier tonight, you had called 17. you had called seventeen agencies for a truck at one point in time.
It was a, it was a Wilbraham call, but a long, it was a few years ago, but yes.
Yeah, so, that way we can see live what the availability is. But right now, there is nothing that we can all share GPS, physical location of all of these resources collectively at this point in time that we're aware of.
I know there's some police departments where, um, there's a monitor at the headquarters where they, uh, officer in charge can see where each car is, uh, in the community. Figure challenges for the region and that the ambulance.
Well, the other challenge is if I was to open our GPS system up between my New Hampshire and Massachusetts operation, the map is enormous. You get lost in, in a two-state map, you need to see tiny little dots. So it's difficult to, to manage that, that view, let's say, but if I keep the amount of trucks smaller, it's an easy task. The nice thing about the GPS system is, once when the truck turns on, it lights up, so you know the truck is moving or getting ready to move. When it goes into drive, it changes color and it goes to green color. When it goes to stop, you know it's arrived on scene, it changes color again. So, that gives, um, Brian's staff and Tony's staff real-time updates in terms of physical location of the truck regardless of radio traffic, which is nice. It's even quicker than radio traffic because the radio is boot up in the truck as well because if it's turned off, they have to boot up. So, throwing some technology at this regional issue, we think is going to help it. Is it going to solve the regional challenges of staffing? It's not going to fix the staffing issue as a whole. So, we're, we feel most of our systems are becoming regional systems to support other communities as community support. That we, you know, it goes both ways, no different than fire mutual aid now.
Does anyone have anything else to ask?
I've got just one more thing, one more thing to point out, you had asked a question or asked for clarification regarding how the regional relationships between the ambulances, how they're affected. You know, Action went to, Action predom, when we send Action out, they predominantly either go to a nursing home call in Wilbraham or a, uh, East Long Meadow. So, out of, out of the, uh, out of December, I know they went to East Long Meadow sixteen times. East Long Meadow came here seven times. So they're going to East Long Meadow more than double what East Long Meadow is coming here. Out of the sixteen times that they went to East Long Meadow, fourteen of those involved a transport or prolonged interaction with a patient. So the truck was committed and that they either backfill it with an ALS or BLS. So...
Would that, would that be a function of population, East Long Meadow has three times the population of Hampden?
Well, East Long Meadow, I think it's a function of population, it's also a function of, unfortunately, I guess for the ambulances, they have a lot of, um, elder care facilities which generate a tremendous amount of ambulance traffic. So, when they're overwhelmed and they can't, they can't go to a call, they're, I, I don't know how they initiate a mutual aid respond request for us, but when they do, we relay it to Action and then the truck, the truck goes.
Last one, Derek should have said they had staffing issues also. That is exact words, or if, if anybody tells you they don't have a staffing issue, they're wrong. So...
I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to minimize or, uh, you know, don't take any of my prior comments to be trying to minimize or, or, um, you know, dismiss the challenges of staffing, uh, they're, they're real. Not dismissing them.
So, a quick question, if this is starting to become a regional unit, we're looking forward to a new contract? Is this something that maybe you'll have a second truck in the town to help deal with the outside calls that they were doing? I know we're still having staffing issues with that, but is it something maybe you can...
So, it's on the table, so the other regional group that we're working with is, we're talking about a number of different options and, we've got a preliminary data set that we still have to comb through that shows all of the responses from the, the Massachusetts ambulance. It's called Matrix, which is a massive database of responses that happened and all the EMS calls that happened in the Commonwealth. What we're trying to do is sift through those calls to see where the peak times are, where the systems start to get stressed. It's challenging getting the data from the Commonwealth, but we're finally getting somewhere because they do have this massive database which might be kind of the key. And what we're saying to the region is this, if we can look at these peak times and peak days for staffing, then cost, how do we in a cost-effective way manage that because the call volume will support it? But do we look at additional staffing where it's a public-private cooperative, where we might rotate days of coverage? Action takes a day, East Long Meadow might take a day, you know, on the North Shore we're talking about Georgetown potentially taking a day. Might be another private company and then we identify so that not everyone, so that the burden of coverage is borne by all, not just one entity. So there's a lot of work being done on, on that topic. We've even been talking with the Commonwealth about this and we've asked them to join this, this work group and they've said that we support it. And having these ongoing conversations about regionalization concepts of coverage is going to be paramount for the future of EMS system design. So there are a number of questions on the table, a number of potential alternative solutions. It comes down to who wants to ultimately collaborate and coordinate. And it's going to come down to the data in the end and how we share the data because we could say, we can say how many times Agency One went to a zip code two and resulted in a transport, right? How many times the Agency Two go to zip code two and result in a transport and then we know those are the mutual aid calls. So data mining that data will give us a really good understanding. Our challenge is, we don't know what's going on with the communities that WestCom dispatches. Tony has great data on his end, so we know those communities, but that's just a very small component of the region. So, there are some paths here, it's just going to take us some time to work through the data to understand it. It's a good question. It's, things are changing right in front of our eyes in the middle as we sit here.
So to wrap up, Staff O'Brien, can you share stats?
And how, how do you want that delivered to this committee? Is that going to be at the next meeting or can that be sent to somebody or... Sir, Mr. Markle?
I'll see that it gets distributed to the committee.
Okay, we touched on communications, um, but at this meeting that I sat in on last week. We talked about the new systems and the difficulty between, and I'm not going to pretend to understand the detail of what I'm just going to say, but UHF, DHF, um, and, you know, EMTs needing to use one radio to keep reporting accurate and another radio to keep communications going. And then Tony was also working on procuring another system that would enable better communication. And I know you just touched on the GPS piece, but there's, you know, that piece, the, I guess the hardware piece. And then there's the regional purview that you just started to, to touch on and then, uh, the GPS function. So, if you could explain that to us, that would be great.
Sure, I'll start from a techni, technology perspective. The first thing that we talked, um, so after the last meeting, um, and we've had subsequent meetings as well. And last week, we met with, uh, the East Long Meadow staff, um, in terms of both remote and in person. We started talking about some challenges relative to communication. Communicating us to, um, not only direct that we, that the town deals with, but also another, uh, regional communication center as well. We've made significant progress on a number of issues in a fairly short period of time, which is nice to report. The first thing is, is that, um, a software, web-based software component called I Am Responding, we now have up and running, that's working. We had the account all along, we just didn't have it connected with, um, the regional dispatch center and that is now up and running, which we're, which is good. We still have some little things and, um, things to work through just to, to make sure all the notifications are going to the agencies appropriately. And some of those are East Long Meadow notifications. The second thing is, is that, um, Tony was able to get confirmation that we can work on a, a radio cross-patch system to work with, um, the, um, the WestCom, which is the dispatch center on the East Long Meadow side to enhance communication with us in East Long Meadow and his dispatch center and, uh, the units there. So that's, that's making, that would make good progress there. Tony has also acquired, um, a special type of digital radio, which is going to be distributed to our crew members in the truck to enhance communication with the dispatch center as well. The, the radio system's become very complicated, digital, P-25, analog. And, so that is, uh, we're hoping to get those deployed by Friday of this week, so it's pretty close to happening. We do need to do some reprogramming of radios in our trucks to get the cross-patch function working. So, um, those vehicles to be programmed or identified, closed the business yesterday, so we have that list. We need to talk to Tony about him programming versus our radio shop, so that's ongoing right now. The second component is, is that we're going to be looking at another option, which is, um, LTE, they call it option, which is essentially cellular portable radios, they're all digital, um, which gives our crews the capability to talk to a computer console within the dispatch center as well as our dispatch center simultaneously. So, we're meeting with our radio shop tomorrow morning early to talk about some of the technology. We've already deployed some of it. The preliminary indications are very good, however, the limitation is if there's no cell coverage, then the system will go down. So the cellular net, it's only as good as the cellular network. So, we do have to kind of go into a test phase with that technology, uh, but it's very promising. We could text those radios, we can create talk groups, uh, we can GPS track those radios just like the trucks as well. So there's a lot of benefit with those particular radios. And then the last component that we're working on with Tony is establishing written policies and procedures. It's what typically we have with most communities about radio nomenclature. So if we're responding to East Long Meadow, into Monson, into other towns and also here in Hampden, then everyone's using the same nomenclature on the radios all the time and that that becomes a written policy that each of the agencies will sign off on. So our crews understand that that nomenclature becomes consistent in the same all the time. So he has a draft of what we typically use for a template for that already. It's just sifting through those particular, um, where he wants to insert those different things for those particular towns. So, um, so that's kind of where we're at. We did meet with the East Long Meadow guys this afternoon. Brian was present as well, Chief Poehl was present. And I think, uh, Chief, I think we made pretty good progress and we made some pretty good strides in a short period of time with this COM issue, but we still have a little bit of, uh, of work to do.
Well, I, I do agree, I appreciate your, um, your effort in that, doing that. And especially with the radio, getting the people, your, the people you're bringing in, getting them trained, honoring your support.
Yeah, the one open thing is that as we create new technology, it can create a downstream problem. Chief Poehl wanted to make sure that if we do an LTE solution, that it's compatible with the Hampden existing setup. So, we have to just kind of step into this slowly so that we don't create an additional problem that we're blindsided with, that we're aware of.
So last week, like, they mentioned, uh, a problem with programming for WestCom, is there any movement on that?
Yes, so, uh, Tony got an official notification from WestCom that it's okay to move forward with the programming. So we're good. So that was the big hurdle, we felt that that was the one barrier that was, uh, that, I think Tony was pretty concerned about that barrier at that meeting. He did get the approval with, I, I want to say by, it's today, I think by the close of business Friday, we got approval. And then, we've been working to identify those trucks and we get those identified to do the radio programming. So within the next week or so, we should have that link fixed and ready to go. So good news there.
When you say programming, you mean configuring the radios to, or...
Yeah, the actual vehicle radios need to be digitally programmed and the portable radios do to be compatible with those, um, radio frequency links.
Okay, my notes on this, I'm scribbling as fast as I can.
It's a lot of technology.
If you, if you have any kind of summary that you'd like to submit, uh, as a supplement to the next minutes, please feel free to do so. I'm going to do my best to summarize.
I've got them all, I got all my notes here, so I can easily type something out for you.
All right, thank you.
I think the radio issue was, uh, from what I hear from a line, from a line employee, that was just an issue with, uh, two extra points of communication didn't need to be there. So, if an ambulance is responding to a medical, it needs to be in an ALS intercept from another town is responding, it needs to be field unit to field unit. And that's what these, um, that's what marrying these radio systems accomplishes versus field unit to regional center to regional center to field unit in back. Communication's delayed and there's just more failure points there.
We took out two hops streamlined.
You took out two hops and we, we don't, I, I know from a personal perspective, I don't want to be in the business of communicating, um, real-time patient updates from a trained paramedic, which is, which is outside of my purview, um, to an, to an ALS interceptor or, or whatever other resource is there. That needs, that's, that's exactly why the fire department and the police department have tactical channels. So they can go responder to responder. So, once that's done, that's, that's, um, that's going to make everything much more clear for them. And, uh, the last but not least, I know Tony's instituted a new policy. So there's going to be a lot more clarity in terms of when we request another, another mutual aid resource, what that resource's, um, specific function will be on the call. In terms of, uh, whether we're requesting it as an ALS intercept, let's say Actions at the basic level, or we're requesting it as a primary. Action's unavailable because they're already committed to another call. So it's going to, it's, it's going to limit the necessary communications and the follow-up questions afterwards as well.
And, um, on that regional concept, one issue that was also discussed last week is to try to identify a way to prevent two trucks from remaining tied up on a particular call on an intercept. Because of the, you know, the region being depleted of potentially EMS resources, if we can clear one of the two trucks to leave one in service instead of tying up two trucks, we're working through procedures with the surrounding agencies to identify those opportunities to not tie up two particular trucks at a time. So that still leaves coverage, uh, within the region as well. So that was addressed, um, we discussed that last week and we're working through that discussion with our staff as well.
Move on communication? Move on. Reports, let's start with quarterly financial. Do you have some questions, um, from the last meeting? Seven one to nine thirty, you used our review. And assume the zip code payer report and the report definition.
Right, the report definitions were helpful because we didn't have a...
He's on the twenty-six hundred line, so, yeah. So I think it's, he was having trouble with his phone, so Rob Zorn, our CFO, was on the phone. And, I will just mention that probably, we have not finished processing claims through the end of the year yet. Once we finish processing claims through the end of the year, which should be within the next forty-eight hours, I will send the last quarterly report over. I'll send it to the, to Bob, to the upload, to the, as well. And then I believe we'll have the month-end data for the year, it'll ultimately be year-end data, but I think we wanted to keep it fiscal year for you, right? Not calendar year. So we'll make sure that we get that first six-month calendar year. What I'll do is I'll send a, a year report and we'll convert it to calendar year with this cycle. So you'll have all of twenty-two and then the first six months of fiscal twenty-three. Does that make sense?
That's, that's what I'll send over.
Okay.
Is this a proposed change to the contract because the contract was quarterly reports?
No, so what, what you'll get is because it's year-end, for us, it's calendar year-end. So I'm going to give you a year-end report for calendar year twenty-two. However, the request was made and I, I had asked if the town wanted it to turn into a fiscal year cycle instead of a calendar year cycle.
Okay.
So what I will give is, you'll end up getting a compiled six-month report for calendar year also.
Okay.
For cap, I mean, for fiscal year twenty-three, or fiscal twenty-three for the town, which will now include the first six months of fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be Q-one and Q-two of FY twenty-three. We get the first two quarters, I'm going to give you a whole summary for twenty-two, calendar year, and then the first two quarters of twenty-three.
Okay.
All right.
Which gives you the look back, please, okay.
Right, but I will also caution the group that a six-month look back is not valid statistically at this point in time because the claims still need to age as well. at this point in time, because the claims still need to age as well. So the first three months will look a little bit better, but they're still not, they're gonna be closed out.
Okay, so how do you want to walk through this? Do you have any other questions, specific questions, or...
No, the comm headers were pretty good. I'm not sure. These are all the revenues that you received from various towns for services. So they, for example, the Monson ones, the East Long Meadows, were regional mutual aid.
Yes.
Or mutual aid calls. Then the summary, I'm just trying to figure out the difference between, I went through the summary, there's this one last page here, it seems to be a repeat of the last column on the prior page.
Yeah, the database just drops two summary lines at the end.
Okay.
So it's just a repeat of the last summary line of page five, is what page six ends at the end.
Okay.
So the numbers tie exactly out, right down the top. Just the way our database works.
Okay, so the total for mid-nine is actually part of that section, so this is, this is just a summary, there's just no header here that says summary total. This is just the total.
It's the total of everything, right?
Okay, grand total type thing.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that could be on the next report.
And ultimately, that last line is the most important one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and that makes sense. The contractual allowances, it wasn't intuitive, but you've defined that for us, so we understand that. Now, I think it makes sense now.
Great.
Do you have any questions? One thing, a moment. Thank you for sending the loss survey. What I did in the back of documentation was, was to include the information from, now it's in the true game, but we didn't. So, that's providing additional information to the terms of the layout of the, we speak to the specifics of the, that's the layout of the area.
You were talking about this report, Alba. Yeah, I go through here, and some things I try to make sense out of, and I can't, so somebody else's perspective would be helpful. If I look at a dispatch on 1115 to One Allen Crest, it was, it was over the 10-minute threshold. The reason given was delay.
Can we just backtrack a second?
Or distance, too.
Just go into the format of the report first?
Oh, okay.
Then we can get, let's just do the explanation of terms, and then we can view the actual report.
Sure.
So do we have, anybody have any questions on the actual, like, the layout of the headers? Everybody's good?
Yeah, they're included.
Moving on. Okay. Now to the specifics of the report, because I think I share some questions. At 1115, One Allen Street, and the out of shoot at 2230, the distance as reason for the delay. I think this, I don't know, you guys can correct it. Is this, is this somewhere else, or coming from somewhere else?
Yeah, so I'll kind of go through what our CAD system does. So any response time that exceeds eight minutes and 59 seconds, CAD system flashes a warning. Okay? And it wants a reason for that delay to exceed eight fifty-nine on at all. Additionally, what our system has done, it's been very, it's kind of been simplified. We've had very few codes. And so if the crew is coming from a longer than normal distance, that's when they put a distance code in. If the system was very busy at the time, they'd say that call volume caused the delay, that might be causing the system. It's a problem with our system.
Okay.
And we recognize that it's a problem. So during the month of December, we've worked with changing those reasons to give a more descriptive reason in terms of why there's excess response time. Okay? And then we're working with the GPS threads to verify those delays. So what happens is, our dispatchers will go back to the GPS system, because a number of things happen with the crews, right? Sometimes they forget to sign on, or they sign on with Brian's center, and they don't sign on with us. So Brian has sometimes a reverse problem, where they sign on with us, but they won't sign on with his center. They might sign off on scene, they might go to the scene, forget to sign off, because they might get pulled into multiple directions or a number of different, or the radio doesn't hit or transmit, and so the dispatcher's left to try to fill in a number, or kind of a placeholder. So they go back and work on verifying those times. So the idea of putting our people on the same radio system, Brian and Tony's staff with an LTE solution, allows them to communicate once, both dispatch centers simultaneously, instead of turning the channel on the radio to try to serve two different dispatch centers to get accurate times.
Right.
So there's a physical challenge about trying to work with two different dispatch centers to create accuracy, and then there's a technical issue to get to that point as well. So for the month of December and moving forward, we're trying, we're working with our dispatch, and understand that this has been years and years and years of conditioning, they just keep, like Brian said, you just keep clicking, right? You just used to click it, you just click through it, to get them to change their thought process, to provide a more descriptive understanding of why these calls, or why there's an excess of response time. So on the December report, we'll see some changes with this, so that people, it'll be, it'll be better nomenclature to understand why there was an outside type of response time, or delay time.
Okay, because, because this one that we're speaking of, the 1115, it's attributed to distance, which to me means that the ambulance was some distance from the, the point of service, you know, the dispatch location, which means to me that the, you know, the ambulance wasn't in town, or wasn't at, you know, wasn't at Commercial Drive. If it wasn't, where was it? But then I'm looking back at this out of shoot, was it because the ambulance was there, but there were no personnel? And I'm trying to figure it out, because there's nothing, if I look prior to that, the prior call to that was 1114, you know, even 10 hours earlier in the day, so we're talking about, you know, 34 hours earlier was the prior call for that ambulance, for Hampden one. So it couldn't have been out on a call. So where was it?
Well, it...
It's later in the report.
So we would need more information to understand it. So part of our goal in terms of opening up the GPS system is to allow people to verify and look at this particular, this data as well, that the truck is there and it's physically available.
But I'd gone through the mutual aid, and there was nothing on 1115 for mutual aid. So, so that's what perplexes me. And I just, I gotta figure out what's going on.
And we can figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
So for December, directly defined on this, not accurate, we're basically gonna see the finance, just a distance, for example, like this December 15 Allen Street as opposed to 66 Blendale, where the out of shoot is three minutes.
Yes.
And, you know, they arrive on scene at 10:08, which then falls from, you know, from 9:00 to 8:00, you know, on scene.
Right. Our policy is less than a minute, we prefer 30 seconds or less. Now, one of the things that we've talked about in terms of my conversations with Tony is I've asked him about some of the out of shoot times. And Tony's response to us, and I've asked him to monitor it as well as ourselves, he is not seeing a problem with excessive out of shoot times with his data. Okay? His staff's response would be, is if your truck wasn't moving fairly quickly or acknowledging the call, they would retone the call. But there's no instances where they've had to retone the call. So we think some of the out of shoot time data is one of those, given the fact that we've been coordinating with Tony, his data analytics, to say, okay, we're there, it's just that some of our data is still not right. And we still think it's because they're trying to communicate to two different communications centers, with Tony's being the primary. We're kind of the secondary in this, because he's controlling what the truck is doing, what else. So we never dispatch our truck, never. It's always done by Brian and Tony's staff.
So working it backwards on this one on Allen Street, the dispatch time was 202044, the en route was 2043, so there's 23 minutes, 22 minutes roughly, and that was the out of shoot time.
Right, and then this leads me to believe...
Which one of those numbers would be incorrect, the dispatch, the en route?
The en route time, because the scene time is 2043. So it's an error, because they're identical. So the dispatcher clicked through it twice.
Okay. On scene was 2043. Okay, yeah, it couldn't have been on scene, the en route, yeah, all right.
Right, and then they transported it 2054. So they error on scene 11 minutes.
Okay.
So for December, we're gonna see an enhancement that better defines, like, distance in this instance that we're talking about.
Correct.
As compared to, you know, and maybe we'll even see a correction to say, like, an out of shoot that's three minutes, right? You know, Blendale, yeah, that's, you know, a little bit of a hike, but had they had a better out of shoot time, they would have been in the SLA to reach, you know.
Right.
Okay.
And we're very cautious about not sharing response times with our crews, because we don't want them doing something unsafe to make up the difference, right?
And that same instance is like Ames Road, because that's another one that's like way out there, but if you didn't have an extended out of shoot, which may or may not be accurate, you'd be within the SLA.
Correct.
Yeah. So the December report's gonna be interesting to see.
You also take into account weather, since we're coming into snow.
We do, we internally mark those bad weather days, heavy rain, snow, ice conditions.
Yeah.
So those do have a factor on response time performance. Absolutely.
So, am I better, or the report enhancing that that incident?
To this report, or just reporting in general?
We're gonna take a look at these outliers in terms of these times, out of shoot response time, we'll be taking a look at that. We'll share weather info with you as well. We typically flag poor weather days. December had a number of them, as we all know, because that becomes a challenge. Your delay reasons are gonna be enhanced as well. So those will be the three primary areas.
So we'll see what that looks like. We talked about...
And we do have to follow up on the 40 Ames Road call. I mean, sorry, the One Allen Street.
When we talk about quarterly reporting, or financial reports, we used to get quarterly on the balance report. We're talking, and we've got, if you know that, it's not part of the contract, but we could do.
Just pushing buttons, so. So you want an aggregated quarterly and top of the monthly?
Yeah, and what we had talked about a while ago, it was a different format, it reverted back to the original format.
Yeah, you were talking with the pie charts and everything.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so if we could get that. Yeah, and then just go through the contract, because there were a couple of other things that weren't included in that report, that if we could include, would be great, like, do we need the email SLA, you know, things like that? But if you want, we can talk about that. I don't remember the list off the top of my head, but there's just a couple of things that would, you know, completely close the loop on contract requirements, that if we could plug it in that report, would be great.
Okay, so, all right, and then we keep the monthly as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so anything more to say on the enhancements?
Just checking notes. From a reporting standpoint, no, I think we're good there.
Okay, Ed, or Scott, or Ryan, is there an update? Any more to add? December is, you guys, just met each other. I don't know if that was the same meeting?
That was the same meeting you were at.
Oh, that was, that was the meeting? Okay, I wasn't sure, that's what I was just...
The reason we met this evening, you told me you had one at four o'clock.
Okay.
And you told me that group, right?
At our last meeting, we talked about, and earlier in the December meeting, so I didn't know if there was a third one that we needed an update on. If there's nothing else to say on that, we need to...
No, I, I don't, you said, like, am I, am I wrong? I mean, you arranged a meeting in East Long Meadow, I stopped by.
Yeah, we also met with Chief Trombley at the beginning of December, I think it was.
Right, we just talked about the staff.
Follow-up.
Follow-up the staff.
Yeah.
Who else showed up?
I know I was remote, because I was laid up.
I had Jim in my office. So it was basically just talking about staffing issues, kind of, to enhance.
Right. And then we had the, we kind of regional meeting last week.
Right.
And follow-up, and then we got a follow-up to that four o'clock meeting.
Yeah, anything we discussed, in East Long Meadow this evening, you reiterated it.
It's one of your charters?
I think we patched it all.
Good to know. Okay, issues and complaints. We, over the life of this contract so far, we had very few complaints, but we did put some in the mail on December 13th, and on the phone, that I put the, the parts of that in backup documentation. It seems like the communication issue has been very well, you know, addressed, and the ones you guys have had, and the solutions are in the process of, they're addressing the, 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 the,
So ultimately, the right resource got to the right patient ultimately, is what ultimately happened here. So the concern was communicating back to the dispatch center about what was going on because it was essentially two calls simultaneously, and I won't say they were the same address, but they're prim, they were same location essentially. And I think the nursing staff threw everybody for, just trying to do the right thing in the end.
So I, just a quick correction there. So the, there's two separate facilities, um, with two separate managements. They same, they share the same driveway. We have Orchard Valley facility, which has traditional living, independent living, with a, a full station and a nurse, which can be run at least on most days. Uh, and then we have Life Care, which is a more, um, it's a more nursing home facility where you have different wings, um, divisions, locked areas for dementia patients and, uh, you know, more traditional nursing stations, um, for every cluster of homes. So the original call was for Orchard Valley, um, for a patient, I forgot what the chief complaint was. And, uh, the ambulance went to Orchard Valley, again, the same driveway as Orchard Valley, but went to the, uh, uh, Life Care facility instead. And staff were there to greet them, say, we have, we have a priority patient here. They say they called nine one one, we have no record of inbound nine one one call, at least the last time I was made aware of this, or the intuitions, or had Tony look into it. Um, unless something's changed there, there was no nine one one call received. So I'm, I'm assuming there's a communication error too with their staff. They call nine one one, oh wait, we don't have to, this ambulance pulled in driveway, grab it. And I'd also like to say that that's not uncommon with nursing facilities. Wolverham has three, one of which is a very high-traffic nursing facility, gives a lot of business to, uh, uh, to ambulance services for Wolverham and Mutual Aid. And it's not uncommon for an ambulance crew to walk into the business and then have staff flag them down for another patient, or have a patient say, I need to get out of here, or I need, I need medical care, can you help me? When they see an ambulance. Um, so sometimes an ambulance crew will reassess the situation and reassign themselves to another issue. Tony's issue with this was, we just, there was a brief period of time where we couldn't communicate with the Action crew, and we didn't know what was going on. And we, we should have been investing that time in sourcing another Mutual Aid ambulance for the Orchard Valley patient, uh, just because we didn't know that the ambulance wasn't committed to that patient for that time. I think that's been addressed and taken care of.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure we understood, like I said, in terms of complaints over the life of this contract, that there are two, we have identified gaps, and if there was a gap in communication or whatever that we needed to address. All the comments are with hybrid communication, like we've done that, but I'm not the expert. We'll go with this one then.
So, the, um, just move on. Rebate check, I assume was cash, Bob, and is now sitting in free cash? Fourteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars?
Yes, I have a question on that. Will the decision, uh, assessment, uh, the real estate stand for the current person here, for fifteen months, or it's, we learn sometime in, uh, uh, early October?
Yes, it would require the same look back to give you the best benefit. Correct. Yeah. And if I didn't explain, our receivables run very, very long in healthcare, very long. They, you know, some stuff is over ninety days to close out, some stuff. Medicare, Medicaid pay within fourteen to eighteen days, but all the commercial payers are much longer, much extended, health wing is very extended, that group. So we wanna get you the best benefit by, if you leave that period open, the longer you get the better benefit in the end. Instead of just closing it on date, on the end of month twelve. It is time to do more collections.
Okay, uh, the other item I have, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate to discuss in this meeting, so I need your guidance, is the contract extension and next steps. Um, I, we, we need to collectively make a recommendation to the board.
We have a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, uh, they will, I guess, within some weeks, uh, make a decision on extending the contract, uh, under the contract for another year, or point bid, so. Uh, if you want to let the board, if this group wants to make the recommendation, uh, we're, that would be welcome.
So I'd like to propose to the committee that we have another meeting in the near term to have a discussion and, you know, decide what we're gonna recommend and move forward from there. Is everyone amenable?
Yeah, we're in the budget process now, so it won't be long before the, the Selectmen make a decision because if we are going to extend, we need to know what the cost will be for the coming to this year, and plan that is in the budget process.
My understanding of a, a contract extension is it's a simple paragraph that extends the contract in its current state for that one or two-year period. The pricing in the contract isn't defined, um, but I would think, given the precedence of your want to increase, that it would be logical to conclude that four and five years would be that same percentage. But I don't know, you know, as a group, we can discuss that and then...
Because they have a meeting on that such as, oh, is that different?
Yeah, well, that's the other item, and so I think we need to schedule another meeting to discuss in the next couple of weeks.
So, and maybe I misread then your committee purpose statement initially. Does this fall under make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Um, because I, I thought that was for compliance and quality, et cetera, because that was what prefaced it.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, your, your, your committee purpose statement, the, the committee will monitor performance and delivery of services.
And provide recommendations.
To the Board of Selectmen.
Right, yeah.
And recommendations.
Okay, I, I thought that recommendation was on the quality of the services, not on the...
Well, you can propose mine to that, your final...
Well, that's why I'm saying, I, I, because I thought that was, I thought that limited this, this, I thought that precluded this discussion we're having right now. That's, that's why I questioned it upfront.
Okay.
I think, um, if we are going to look at making recommendations for any kind of contract extension, we have to look at state procurement requirements. Um, if we are going out there and looking at numbers, do we need to bid, do we need to bid it? When, when, when it was originally contracted, um, does that close other options for that original three years? Yes, but for the two-year potential extensions? I, I don't, I don't know how any of that works.
In a contract we currently have, there is the option to extend, and that would be, that would make a one-year extension contractual thing.
You can, you can opt for...
One-year extension at what rate?
You can...
One-year extension at what rate?
Well, that's what we have to talk about.
Stuck in the contract, so that's what we...
And you, you can opt for one year, or you can opt for two years, but that's the discussion collectively as a committee we have to have.
Okay, so we'll have this at a different meeting, I won't have it now.
Yes.
But my, my, I'm asking for information prior to the next meeting on what, on procurement requirements, when we have a contractual opportunity for two one-year extensions, as I understand it, um, and we have no numbers associated with that. So what are the procurement requirements in order to, to allow the town to do that if it chooses to do it? Number two is before we make that decision, um, that recommendation's not our decision, I understand, it's the Board of Selectmen's decision. Before we make that recommendation, wouldn't it behoove us to look at what other opportunities are currently available now versus what were been available three years ago? And I'm, I'm not implying in any way that what we've got now is, maybe it's the best there is, um, you know, despite problems and, you know, everybody's having problems, we recognize that. But, um, where is our obligation in terms of making recommendations? What do we need to do in order to make sure we're covering our, covering the requirements of Massachusetts procurement?
Is there any kind of, since we don't have a number associated, is there some kind of range or idea we could get from Action?
Yeah, we can provide something to you.
You know, that would be like in the ballpark as to what we're looking at? So we kinda know what we're talking about, so we...
There's a lot of changes that have happened over the past sixty days with reimbursement. Medicaid has increased their rate, uh, Medicaid has gone up, Medicare has gone up eight point seven percent as of January first, so there's a lot of positive financial indicators to not look at massive price increases because the feds and the state are increasing subsidy rates on that front. We're expecting additional Medicaid support and fiscal twenty-four from the state as well.
The Board of Selectmen reminded me that contractual issues are not a purview of this, that would be negotiations with the State, or with me based on what the Board of Selectmen provides as instructions.
Well, that makes it easy for us. We could still get a, an idea of their reimbursement.
Yeah.
Okay, so we still can get that information. Yeah, I think our purview is limited to that recommendation, and that they can deal with the, the dollars. Okay, well, we'll...
No, this committee, what I'm saying, this committee does not, would not be in a negotiation with the company over an extension, that would be, that would be the initial for the Board of Selectmen.
But we could get an idea of what... No, we don't, we don't care. I mean, that's not our charge. Our charge is to make a recommendation to the Board that we think this contract should be extended for a year or two or not.
Right. My understanding of where we stop, my other understanding is, you know, given the language and town has a right to renew the agreement for two one-year options, that that is the procurement. That gives us, this contract that was executed in twenty twenty, gives us that option to extend the contract. That is the procurement.
And I, that's just a question I'm asking.
I, I think that also, but I'll, I'll just consult.
Yeah, you should ask those, that would be great.
Everyone can be assured that what we, if we extend, everyone should be assured that that we're acting in accordance with the term regulations.
But I, I will reiterate, my position is, in order for, you know, I'm talking for myself, in order for me to recommend, um, the extension of the contract, I would have to know what the other options are, and I don't know what the other options are right now. No, it's not appropriate tonight, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying that those are, those are things that need to be in that...
So do we have a date for this meeting?
I, I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that this is not going to take a long time, because we are in the budget process, we have a plan, uh, for ambulance services into the coming year budget. So my sense is that within the next three or four weeks, we'll get this on the Selectmen agenda, and I will know if their direction is negotiate another year or whatever, or throughout the, the budget process.
So we should meet between, before that? Okay, so, um...
Do you, is it Monday holiday? Does that...
Seventeenth is the Indian, is the fire department beating for Grand Aitken.
Tuesday.
Eighteenth is what I was looking for, is the eighteenth work, six o'clock?
It's Wednesday. I believe so. Okay. Anybody wanna vote to adjourn? I make a, a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Done.
Today, now.
Thanks, everybody, for your time.
The eighteenth...
Thank you.
Eighteenth, six o'clock.
Yeah.
Sit down.
Oh, I love it.
Bye.
Great.